Giddy. The April the 20th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. Commissioner Noon will lead us in invocation, please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, again, we have so many things to be thankful for. One of the things is the fact that we live in a nation that's free, and we ask, Lord, that you continue to be with this nation, that you guide and direct the leaders, and we pray that you be in the City of Longview, particularly tonight, be with us as we make decisions concerning the future of Longview. Forgive us where we fell there, in Christ's name we ask it. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. The next item of business is the approval of the March 16 minutes due. If there are no corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is now time for citizen comment on the agenda. We have reached the citizen comment portion of our meeting, and this portion is for comments made other than the public hearing items that we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please wait until that time to speak. Please begin. If you have comments to make, please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the public record. Do we have any public or citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. We're now on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Would anyone like to have an item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now on to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings that are required to approve a change in zoning. The commission also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened, and testimony will be heard first by staff, then by the applicant, and then from the general public. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on their request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on May the The regular agenda item A, Angela, will you please introduce it?
Yes, ma'am. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application SW 21-03 filed by Mitchell Labou for a waiver to the City of Longview UDC subdivision regulations, Article D, Section 5.02, Subsection A, to allow for a minimum lot size of approximately 11,460 square feet instead of the required 12,000 square feet minimum, and to allow for a minimum lot depth of 110 instead of the minimum lot depth of 120 feet in single-family 2 zoning district, Lot 1, Block 2 of the Hills and Trails addition located at the northwest corner of Bridgers Hill Road and Remington Trail. And I will now begin my staff report. The applicant is requesting a waiver to the lot size and the lot depth requirements. This phase of Hills and Trails was developed, was platted in 1977, and this was the first phase of that subdivision. In 1986, this lot was illegally subdivided. The north portion of the lot was sold off to the neighbor to the north. This property is zoned, as previously stated, SF 2, which requires a minimum lot width of 80 feet, a minimum depth of 120, and a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. The applicant can meet the width requirement, however, he does not meet the depth requirement or the size requirement. With that, the applicant is attempting to make his lot compliant by going through the plating process to correct the illegal subdivision. Staff does recommend approval of this waiver. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Was this part of the city at that time, or was this prior to annexation?
It was prior to annexation. However, plating, they are still required to go through the plating process through the city because they were in our ETJ, and so they did file a plat through the city, and it was filed at the county. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions of staff? Is the applicant present, and do you have anything you'd like to add or to speak on regarding this request?
I don't believe the applicant is here.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions?
Are they trying to do an addition, or what's the...
Yes, sir, are they trying to do a small patio addition?
A patio, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of this request? Please, if so, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself. Seeing none, is there anyone that opposes their request? Are there any additional questions? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept this as presented.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Regular agenda item B, Angela, will you please introduce it?
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application SW 21-04 filed by Benny Davis for a waiver to the City of Longview UDC requirements. Article D, Section 5.02, Subsection A, to allow for a minimum lot width of approximately 49 feet instead of the required 60 feet minimum in single-family 4 zoning district for approximately 1.183 acres of proposed Lot 1, Block 1 Lily Edition located at the west side of Lily Street, north of the intersection of Lily and Chapel Street. And then I will present my staff report. So this lot was illegally subdivided from the lots to the south that face Chapel Street. It was originally all one block, one lot, and so the property is zoned SF 4, which requires a minimum lot width of 60 feet, minimum lot depth of 100 feet, with a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. The applicant can meet the depth requirements and the lot size requirements. However, he cannot meet the lot width requirements. The proposed lot, as stated before, would have a minimum lot width of 49 feet but a depth of 160, and a minimum lot size of 7,971 square feet. The lots to the south also received a similar waiver to the lot width requirements in 2017. The developer at the time developed the two lots just to the south, just west of that intersection, and those lots had a 55-foot wide lot with 150 feet in depth. The applicant is attempting to make this lot compliant by going through the plating process to correct this illegal subdivision. The lot does comply with all other requirements. This lot is located in our South Longview Incentive Program area called the SLIP program, SLIP area. So he has been approved for the SLIP program, and all his fees have been waived. Staff does recommend approval of this waiver. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you like to come to the microphone and speak on the behalf of the request?
No.
You'll pass, okay. Make note that the applicant is present for further questions. Does the commission have any questions, any additional questions? We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this request?
I'm Vanita Williams.
She is in opposition to the request.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Vanita Williams, and I live at 1409. That's my house right there on the corner of Chappelle. I feel like him trying to build his house 49 feet closer to my property line, and from what she says, it'll be six feet different. Well, if his house catch a fire, then there goes my fence, and then that fence will be adjoining to this fence here, and then my house. Between those houses, I guess you said it was 15 feet, and that's less than the houses in California when they burned down. They were only 20 feet apart. So I just feel like it's a fire hazard. And if Mike Austin did it to our house, and then now this man is trying to do it to that lot, well, then across the street is forest, I mean trees, and then the same thing is going to happen there. And then the next thing we know, we're in a fire zone. I just don't think that they should keep building these houses that close together. I think it's a fire zone. I feel like if something happens with, in the future, we have another epidemic, the houses close together, the children playing together, rats, roaches, anything could happen. And I just don't think it's just a good idea to keep building these houses this close together. And that's just my opinion. And I just, I vote that we don't even have it done. He can, I mean, he did not even survey that property because right here where he cut down that tree, my property line was there, the bushes was there, my property line was inside the bushes. I had to stop the guy from cutting it because he didn't even know where the property line was. So I just, I feel like if he had measured this property from the get-go, that house right there that he built, that brick house, would it be in the center of that lot instead of him trying to build a house right there in that small area?
So the applicant is going through the plating process, so he does have this property surveyed?
He did not have that property surveyed, because if he had the property surveyed, he wouldn't have had that guy bulldoze the property, the bushes where my property line was inside the bushes. He had to know, if he had it surveyed, he would have saw that the property line had already been surveyed in 2018.
So the survey here is on the screen. He has had it surveyed, and it's going through our plating process.
Well, then why did he not know where the property line was?
It may have been before, I'm not sure when that happened, but he is going through the plating process, and it has been surveyed.
Well, all the bushes that were there that divide my property from him, he cut them all down. And that was like my fence that was there, and now it's gone. And so I had signed up, got a petition with signatures of people who lived in the area, and they don't like the fact that they're making these houses this close together, just like I don't like it. So...
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Yes, it is to be noted that the commissioners have been handed a petition with signatures, as she stated. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
So it's 11 foot?
I'm sorry?
11 feet.
I can't hear you.
It's 11 feet from 49 as opposed to 60?
That is correct, yes, sir.
What are the lot widths on Chapel Street of those houses right there?
Those are 55. And he will meet setback requirements, I mean, through the building permitting process, he will meet all of the City of Longview's setback requirements, you know, he's going through the permitting process right now.
Where is Ms. Davis's house? Is it south?
It's south, and it's the one in the middle. Can you circle? It's the, I believe it's the one without the fence in the middle right there.
You have a picture of it that you showed it earlier, where my house is. That's my house right there on the corner. And that lot that's next to it, Mark, Mike Austin gave me that lot because he was trying to do the same thing this man, he was trying to build a house there, and he realized he couldn't, so he gave it to me. And I feel like that brick house that he built earlier should have been in the center of that property because he knew that he didn't have enough footage there for second eyes.
What street does your house face, ma'am?
Chappelle.
Thank you.
My house face Chappelle.
And you own the lot just east of you on Lily Street?
Mm-hmm, that lot right there that's empty, yes. He actually gave that lot to me because he couldn't build a house right there.
So where he's planning on, this lot that we're talking about, your house, the back of your house is actually what's facing it?
Yes.
Angela, have you compared the signatures to the notifications?
I just got the petition today. This does not require the supermajority. We are actually, by state law, we're not required to notify for subdivision waivers unless they're associated with replats.
Okay.
So it doesn't require a supermajority, nor does it require notification, but staff did notify.
Well, I just feel that I got those signatures because the people in the neighborhood, they do have an opinion. We all stay there. And if a fire does break out, we could lose our homes because the houses are too close together. So it affects all of us there. And I just moved over there in 2017.
And what is the distance between your house and that house next door?
Well, according to this thing here, and she was saying it's what, about 15 feet?
So she, the survey she just showed me, I'm sorry. It's seven and a half feet from the property line to each house, meaning that it's 15 feet apart.
And the houses in California were 20 feet apart when they lost all of their homes. And I'm sure y'all heard about that on the news. And mine has less footage than that. So, yeah, if it catch a fire, it's gone.
So Angela, is there a side setback requirement?
Yes, and it's six feet, so those houses exceed our minimum setbacks. And so Mr. Davis will meet our minimum setbacks of six feet for SF 4 on the sides, and then he's got 10 foot on the rear, 30 in the front. So they will meet our setbacks. They'll meet our, they'll go through the permitting process and meet the fire code requirements as well as the building code requirements. Yes, ma'am?
Of course. He has, those houses are brick homes. So if it catches a fire, the inside will go up in flames, but the outside will still be standing. As you can see, my house, it has siding on it, and 1407 has siding too. It's gone. A lot of those houses over there are, was built in the 1950s. I talked to a lady the other day. She has a wooden house, and they're just not maintained, so it's just going to go up like a plane.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Any other speakers? Having no additional comments, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain Second call for a motion. Hearing none, the agenda item has failed due to lack of motion. Moving to your regular agenda item C, Angela, will you introduce it, please?
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z 21-07 filed by Virginia and Juan Zermino, requesting a rezone from general retail to single-family 4 for lots 1, 2, northern portion of lot 3, western portion of lots 9 and 10, Block 7, Buchanan Gardens, located at the southeast corner of Marbury Avenue and Level Street. The applicant is requesting this rezone from general retail to single-family 4 to build a single-family home. The rezone is required to allow single-family homes within this district. Marbury is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the city. Level Street is classified as a local roadway and is also maintained by the City of Longview. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak on your project?
The applicant is present, but they don't wish to speak.
All right, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or the applicant?
So it's going to go for a rezone, and then it'll go for a plat?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Because right now you have five tracks making up the request, correct?
Yes, sir.
No further questions? We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support or in opposition of this request? If so, please come to the podium and introduce yourselves. Anyone in favor of or in opposition to this request? Second call.
I'd be in favor of...
Are you representing the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll just be in favor of, I mean, it's just going to be a single...
Wait, excuse me, introduce yourself if you will, your name and...
Yes, ma'am. Eric Gonzalez. I'm voting in favor of it's going to be a single-family home, and we would replat and rezone, you know, everything into becoming one lot, because right now it's two lots, and so we would make everything be one lot. And the single-family home would be facing Level Street, so it'd be away from Marbury. It wouldn't be, you know, facing as far as, you know, being a general retail.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Angela, is there an existing building facing Marbury?
On the lot or next door?
On the...
There is not a building on the lot, however, there is, there's a slab on the existing lot. I believe there used to be an ice house there. There is a building next door on, on the property next door that faces Marbury. There's two buildings.
Okay, so what we're seeing in the aerial is the slab?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, the last question, staff. I noticed on the reason for request, it says residential, and then it says keep a portion retail. Can you do retail in a SF 4?
No, and I asked them whether they wanted to rezone all of it or a portion of it, and then they said all of it, but the applicant said, the application said a portion, so we struck that out.
Okay. I just, I knew you couldn't have both.
Good catch. Any other questions or comments? If there are no additional comments, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
We have a motion, and did I hear a second down here? A second from Mr. Jones? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Regular agenda item D, Angela, please.
Thank you. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 21-09 filed by Arun Srinivasan, requesting a rezone from multifamily 3 to single-family 4 zoning districts for lots 1 through 9, Block 1, Insignia State Subdivision located at the intersection of Insignia Way and Bill Owens Parkway. The applicant is requesting a rezone. This whole subdivision, when it was developed, was developed in multifamily zoning. Our old zoning ordinance did allow for this, did allow for a development of single-family homes and neighborhoods in all zoning districts except industrial. However, with the new code change, that did change. So the applicant is requesting that the whole neighborhood be rezoned to single-family 4 from multifamily, which is consistent with the Wildwood neighborhood to the south, which is also zoned SF 4. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Michael, is that the piece of property that originally they thought about putting apartments on?
Yes, sir.
And then they built this subdivision?
Yes, sir.
And is he here? Are we, he's built out, is he not?
No, there's just a few lots left, just a few, I believe.
Two?
Two or three.
Great.
Oh, five, I was corrected.
Is the applicant present?
He is not.
Thank you.
And I guess the last question I would have was that the other 16 homeowners are on board?
Yes, sir, we got a signature from everybody.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of or in opposition of this request? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Move approval as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Agenda item E.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S 21-03 filed by Jesus Morales, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family dwelling in multifamily 2 zoning district for lot 16, Block 3 of the Melrose Edition located at 1403 North 7th Street. As stated, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family home in multifamily zoning district on 7th Street. As stated in the previous case, single-family homes are not permitted by right in multifamily zoning districts in the UDC. However, they are allowed by right through either a rezone process or a specific use permit. In this scenario, a specific use permit is more appropriate considering all the lots on 7th are zoned multifamily. However, the street directly behind them on 8th Street, all those properties are single-family. So staff finds that the proposed SUP is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak, sir? Come to the microphone, introduce yourself, give us your address, and tell us about your project.
How you doing? My name is Jesus Morales. My address is 1401 North Forestry, I mean, 7th Street. Like, she say I would like to build my own house and that property, but I don't realize that property is on multifamily property, so that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to the UDC, we were allowed, people are allowed to build lesser zoning on...
So, yes, prior to the UDC, you could build a single-family home in any zoning district except industrial. However, through the UDC process, staff, along with a lot of citizens and, you know, the consultants, we evaluated it, we looked at it. What we saw that happened a lot of times would people would build in commercial zoning or near commercial zoning, and it would be multifamily zoning or commercial zoning or general retail zoning. But they would build the house and then complain about the commercial properties next door, about the noise, the light, the sound. And so we, you know, from a staff standpoint, and we had a lot of citizens say it too, that it wasn't appropriate to build a home. You think about, here it makes a lot more sense, but you think about on Highway 80, is it appropriate for somebody to build a house between, I don't know, Popeye's Chicken and Church's Chicken? No. But at that time, it was allowed, and so we did allow it in the previous zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Staff, again.
Yes, sir.
We had this exact scenario last month on the duplex situation. Remember the...
Yeah, that, yeah, with the existing duplexes.
Is this another one of those areas where we need to identify the MF2 on all of 7th Street to correct it?
Well, so right now, he's, his is a vacant piece of property.
Right.
You know, do we, do we talk to the neighbors, have a neighborhood meeting, see if they want to rezone out of MF2? You know, I think in the previous case last month, those were all, I mean, we get your point, those were all built out, and they were, they were all duplexes. In this case, I'm not sure what the adjacent neighbor may do. They may want to build, they may want to build a duplex or multifamily. Now, there is, I'm not sure what, I think there's a single-family structure to the north of it, but the rest of the land is vacant.
Coming up 7th from Greenwood... Coming up 7th from Greenwood and going south from Greenwood? Yeah, I see there's... But 8th Street is single, SF...
Yes, sir. 8th Street is single-family and it, yeah, it's zoned single-family, yes, sir.
Okay, just an idea, because we've got...
Yes, sir, we understand.
Pockets. What would happen now if his neighbor, who owns the property south of him comes before us, then we've got another case? If you want us to put a single-family on there?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We, the public hearing is open. Does anyone want to speak in opposition or in support of this request? Please give us your name and address.
Oh, hi. My name is Calixton Arvias. I'm the owner of the lot on the north side of this. And I'm just, I'm not very familiar with zoning, but I'm just worried that for changing the zoning, might, might lower the value of my property. That's one thing, because I bought it to see if I can build a duplex or something like that. And that's why I show up, just to make sure that my, my property will not lose value.
Okay, so we're zoning, rezoning the property to the south of you. But because state law, because state law requires that we notify everybody within 200 feet and we actually, our ordinance requires 300 feet, you did receive a notification letter. But we are rezoning the property to the south of you, Mr. Morales' property. Does that make sense?
Well, doesn't that include my property also when you change that?
We are not, no, we are not changing your property.
Because then you're going to have a single-family and then right next to me.
Yeah, you know, there is going to be a single-family.
Will that affect my value of the property?
I, I don't know. I can't answer that, but...
Okay. That's one thing. And the other, when Mr. Morales did his fence, he actually went like two feet, two feet through my property. I, I, it was, I don't know if he did the survey or not, but when I did my survey, his fence was on my property. He told me he moved it. I haven't, I haven't really, because he had it, it was brick or it was concrete based and then wooden part on top, so he needs to correct that.
Anything else?
No, that's it. As I said, I'm not, I'm not here to oppose. I just want to make sure that I don't lose value on my property and that he gets his fence set where it needs to be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's been recorded. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in support of or in opposition? Any other questions of commissioners?
Can I speak again?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
When I bought that property, I take a survey to do my property. But they, I don't know if they charge me cheap or, I don't know, they do it wrong. And like he say, I'm on his property on the side, on the street side, two, two foot to his property. So in the back side, I'm in his property eight inches. So, so he do his survey and he tell me that I'm on his property. I said, all right. So I weigh like a month and I bring another survey on, on the loop survey, I think. HB survey, something like that. And so he tell me that I'm on his property, the survey that I bring after him. So he charged me more money like the first one, so I think that's correct survey that I get last, from last time. So I already moved my fence on the north side, all the way from the, from the, from the front to the back. I was eight inches on the back and two foot on the front, so I already moved it.
Thank you, sir. Did you hear that?
Yeah, I may, can I ask him, ask him if he did?
Can you please come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, so, so you moved your fence already?
Yes.
So you took the brick out, all the, all the asphalt?
I take the brick from the tree all the way to the back.
Yeah, but you, you, the base that you had, it was concrete.
I was not going to blow this block.
You tear it all out and?
Tear it out.
I'm, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
We have a motion? Second. And a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is staff update from the prior meeting.
Yes, ma'am. All items that went to city council, there was four items, they were all approved by city council.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from commissioners? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.